I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that our district clerk leads us in the pledge.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Our first order of business is the examination, alteration, and approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please, that the agenda of March 5th, 2013 be approved as submitted?
So move. Second.
Questions, comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Mrs. Rutan cannot be with us tonight. She is not feeling well and sends her requests. Approval of consent agenda. May I have a motion, please, that the board approve the following consent agenda? Approval of minutes of February 12, 2013, as submitted. Acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education. Acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes. May I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education approve this consent agenda?
So move. Second.
Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Treasurer's report. Attached to your packet is a treasurer's report for the month ending December 31st, 2012. May I have a motion, please, that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue, and expense budget report for the month ending December 31st, 2012, be approved?
So move.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Six in favor and none opposed. Thank you. We have no special reports this evening. Visitor speaking time. Do we have anybody calling? No. Nobody has expressed interest in addressing the board. And we move on to our student representative. Good evening, Gwen.
Hello. In general, March is a kind of slow but also very busy month. It's a month approaching the long haul for APs, which are in May. February 28th was the blood drive, and I heard that was very successful. I was not in school. I was sick. But I think that was, it's always a good effort, and we always get a lot of people out, juniors and seniors, obviously, because you have to be 16 with parental consent. Coming in April, there should be a start of more things. Putnam, Dr. Putnam came on the morning show today. He does Tuesdays with Tom. And he announced the Dignity for All Students Act poster contest, so that is under, like, on its way. And the week where we do Pause Before You Post and that, the GSA Day of Silence, I think it will be in April. And then also in April, Key Club is doing a book drive, and it's actually going to be on a national, like, give books away day. There's like a national day through some organization, but we're also going to do an accompanying book drive, so we have more books. And then we really are moving into May, where we do Day of Caring, which is a big thing. We do Earth Day Cleanup. And there is, Mr. Wallen and Mr. Graves have been working on a campaign called, it's based on this YouTube video, which you can actually watch online. It's called Behind the Swoosh, the swoosh, the Nike symbol. And it's basically just raising awareness about where we get our apparel mainly, what countries it comes from, the work behind it. And Nike was publicized a while ago for, like, questionable conditions. But anyway, the man who's behind the campaign, I guess you should call it, is coming in to speak. So that will be happening.
Sounds great. Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for Gwen? All right. Thank you. We move on to our superintendents' reports. Dr. Grimm?
Great. Thank you. One of the things I did want to mention before we get to the students' staff honors, had a busy week last week. I wanted to have a shout-out to the Cobble's Elementary School, their family library night. We had a sing-along with Dr. Grimm and Mr. Green. It was a great time. And it was amazing how many books everybody was checking out, and just a great family event. On Wednesday, I met with a student at the high school regarding the budget, and we had a nice talk about the priorities in the budget, also just the elemental components of what is a school district budget, and talked to them about the effects of the budget crisis in the last three or four years. It was interesting. We're going to meet again in another month, at the end of this month. And I also, for the first time, saw the robotics event at RIT. And I am telling you, that is, you can't just send pictures and understand what it's all about. You have to be there. So it was, it was great. Went down in the pit. The kids are wonderful. The adults are wonderful. It's an outstanding event. And I believe we are moving on to the next level, I'm pretty sure. So it's exciting. It's exciting, really exciting. So with that, we're going to move forward with the student honors with a National Merit finalist. Outstanding honor for Madeline Elliott and Charles, who have been named finalists in the competition, eligible for National Merit scholarships. The polar plunge. The varsity and interact clubs at the high school participated in the annual polar plunge in February, and they raised over $500 for the Special Olympics. And the Monroe County Volunteer Firemen's Association Fire Essay Contest had winners. Included Bay Trail students Jessica Santiago and Amanda Rita, Indian Landing students Felicia Hutter and Elliot DeHollander, Cobble student Alyssa Tazdeller, and Harris Hill student Sierra Dawson, and Scribner student James Bruno, all recognized for their outstanding essays. And we also know that there are outstanding teachers behind that, helping them be motivated and have the confidence to apply for something like that. Our art exhibit, which is one of the first ever, it's in conjunction with Webster Schools and the Aronakoid Schools, West Aronakoid Schools. It was an exhibit, and it's going on right now at the Arts and Cultural Council of Greater Rochester. It's Youth Art Month. And I was there at the opening on Friday, along with our art teachers, and just outstanding pieces. It's an excellent opportunity to have those students be rubbing elbows with the professional art community. And it's going to go on for the rest of this month. The students are listed there. A blood drive at the high school, collected 77 units of blood for the American Red Cross. And with that, we come to the instructional budget and budget projections with Dr. Sansoussi. I will tell you that the budget communication cycle is in full gear. It's reflexive in terms of receiving information, giving information, receiving information, giving information, changing, seeing where we're going, where have we been, refining our information, getting new questions, getting answers. So that's been helping. This is a piece of that, too, and you're a big piece of that. Coming up, foreshadowing, and I know Mark will get to this, too, we'll have another meeting with our school budget advisory team, which are the district-level leaders. We have a conversation on education next week, and then we have another board meeting, and then we have a board workshop. So that's really, the next two weeks are vitally important for us to really start to figure out and focus in on exactly where we need to be as a, in terms of our budget. So Mark is going to take us through, really, our core business, the instructional budget. And it's very interesting, very detailed, and I'll let Mark take it away.
Thank you. We've, just to remind everyone, as we begin, I know that for those here at this table, this seems repetitious, but for those who aren't regular attendees or for those folks at home, we always begin our budget presentation with a reminder of our goals, and our three goals are around academic excellence, partnerships, and fiscal responsibility. So certainly tonight, you know, the focus mostly on fiscal responsibility, but it's that fiscal program that supports partnerships and excellence and really makes us who we are as a school district. Budget presentations to date, we've gone through, you know, the administrative portions of the budget in January. We moved on through staff development, the special areas, special education portion of the budget, buildings and grounds, all that done. Tonight is the single largest piece of the budget, the program portion of the budget, classroom instruction, really. So regular school teaching, occupational education. This portion of budget also includes libraries and clubs and sports. Graphically, you can see here that it's the single largest piece. Thirty-one percent of the budget is composed of those areas, and it's going up by about 2%. That is about a half million dollars. It's a $27 million, $27.1 million component of our overall budget. What's included? What is included in that 2%? What are the significant changes? You have a more detailed, as you always do, you have more detailed information that's at your places, but the sort of large and significant items that are different from year to year, other than changes in staffing, retirements, sort of the normal ins and outs. This budget does include four FTE enrichment positions at the elementary schools. That's not an increase from last year's budget. It's an increase from where we're at right now. As you know, we have two FTE at the elementary schools. So if we didn't, if we continued in our normal course of business, they'd be eliminated as we move forward. For now, those two positions are being held in the budget pending an outcome of a program analysis that's going on right now. So perhaps more to come on that. We've looked at our, we've examined the incoming kindergarten classes at the elementary schools, as well as the kindergarten classes we have now moving up into first grade, all the shifting from grade level to grade level. And we believe we need to include one new FTE for elementary enrollment currently. You know, that position would be at Harris Hill. It sort of tends to shift around as time goes on, but for right now, we're including that 1.0 FTE. We've also included 1.0 additional FTE for an additional network technician. There's some, quite a bit of information in your packet on this. Essentially, what's happened over the course of time is we've added dramatically to our technology infrastructure, lots and lots and lots of new devices. And in the course of that time, we've not added any support of that. And the future for us, as we move into testing at the elementary schools on computer, holds even more, holds the potential of even more devices. So at this point, we think we're at the tipping point, where we simply can't continue to be able to offer a reasonable service without the additional support. And this budget also is where we include in all of our budgets additional FTEs for unallocated positions. Those are for changes that we don't anticipate or exactly what they are. We know they happen as we do scheduling, as we move throughout the course of the year, as special education moves and changes. That's the pool that we draw from for those, for those positions. The other significant change in this budget is also included, the dollar amounts are not large, but it is a significant change in our pattern of spending in the area for athletic uniforms, in the interscholastic budget, and music equipment in the music budget. We're budgeting for a 15-year replacement cycle of musical equipment. Currently, there's no replacement cycle for that equipment. It's catch-as-catch-can. And the music department's done a very good job of analyzing their inventory, looking at what they have, and developing a plan. And there's approximately an additional $15,000 included to support that plan. And then athletic uniforms, simply as the result of years of cuts. Cloth was one of the first victims of our last few years of reductions, and we're to the point now where we need to get back on cycle. So there's approximately $20,000 included in the interscholastics budget to get that equip, the uniform replacement cycle back on track. One of the ways we've been, during this year and last, begun to look at the budget is to provide a little bit of perspective. I just talked about athletic uniforms. I just talked about interscholastic activities and music and so forth. This is our graphic representation of what this budget really looks like. So you see regular instruction at the bars furthest to the left, and by far, the vast majority of this budget is regular instruction. You know, interscholastics, and we know when we do survey work or when we have conversations in the community, interscholastic support looms large. It gets lots of press. It's what's in the paper. It's very much on people's minds. It's a very public part of our program, and it's a part of our program that people are very invested in. But as you can see, that's the bars furthest to the right in terms of the overall dollar value of the program. Certainly, it's not as great as some people often might believe it to be. It's about the size of school libraries, occupational education. You see, clubs is the smallest component of this. You can split that up differently, and that's what this slide does, splits that same $27 million up by what it's spent for, rather than by what program it is spent. And you see, once again, this is, this is not news to anyone who's followed this. It's we spend on people. We are a people business, and the majority of our expenses, and again, in this slide as well, are for salaries for certified teachers, for certified employees. Some, the second largest is non-certified salaries. And then you see, you know, sprinkled across the rest of that graph, relatively much more minor amounts for things like equipment, textbooks, contractual items, supplies, and so forth. Want to take a minute, I think it's important that we spend a little bit of time and look at that, at the salaries in a little bit more detail. So of that $27 million, $22 million was for salaries, certified salaries in particular. And this graph splits that up by what those salaries are for. So once again, splitting up the, just the certified salary line of $22 million, you see general education, again, the majority of the expense, librarians, occupational education, computer, athletics, you can see those salaries as well. Continuing to look at that $22 million, if you look at just the general education portion, so let me go back. So just that approximate $20 million in general education, it splits up across the district in this fashion. So some of it is district-wide, the majority of it at the elementary schools, the high school, and the middle school. Again, looking at that slightly different, what kinds of programs is it spent on? And here you can see that the largest single area is elementary school instruction. So K6, so this includes all the elementary schools, K5, and then sixth grade is still considered elementary. So at the middle school, sixth grade is included there. English, math, science, and social studies, so the core secondary subjects are the next largest group of salary expense. And then you see the other programs. So district-wide includes, I lumped into that, that's funding for substitute teachers and so on. But then you can see the rest of it is program expenses, reading, foreign language enrichment, health, secondary music, art, PE, SLAT risk, and a few other miscellaneous programs. Before I, that, that sort of is, I want to spend a little bit of time on looking for, looking at where we're at with regard to the budget, talking a little bit about, you know, what we're going to be doing over the course of the next month as we finalize this. But before I leave the Program Two portion of the budget, I think it'd be a good spot to pause and see if there's any questions.
Thank you. Mark. Board members, do you have any questions?
You know.
John?
Just on the, I noticed in one of the lines, the non-certified computer-assisted one, that individual line went up like by $118,000, just adding one FTE.
Yes, that's one FTE, and also included in that line is, there's two components of that line. It's in the explanation, but probably didn't call it out far enough. Also in that line, or in that area of the budget, is budgeted the staffing for the auditorium, and that includes overtime staffing for the auditorium. We bill that out, so there's a revenue in support of that portion of it, but that was increased in this budget as well, as that's gotten used more and more. So there is one additional FTE for an, for the additional, for the additional staff member that we propose, and then the other part of that is additional outside use of the auditorium.
Okay. That answers it, because it looked like it was a little bit out of, a little bit high for it, so.
Yes, no, there's more in there. There's both those things in that one.
Okay. Thanks.
Steve?
Mark, if I could just follow up on that, because I had the same, same question. It still seems to me to be on a high side, and when it, why are we paying overtime? Why not hire a position, so we pay straight time instead of time and a half?
It's a little bit of both. There's the staff member who is primarily responsible for the auditorium, does often generate overtime in that position. We also, we also employ, as we're able to, other technicians who come in. Sort of that pool consists of mostly of folks in that, in that technology department, because it's sort of a technology kind of thing, light boards and so on. Again, the point I'd make about that is we are billing dollar-for-dollar, those costs get billed, other than for our costs. So for example, if overtime's generated by a school event, then we can't bill it. But to the extent that it's, you know, generated by an outside dance team, for example, or, you know, one of those kinds of events, then that gets charged. Those costs are charged to the, to the user.
I don't know if I can bounce around. I have some other questions, but others want to get in first.
All right. Catherine, do you have a question? No? Okay. John?
I should know this, but the three unallocated positions, they're teachers, correct? And I'm just not, what is the job description for that person? I probably know what it is, but.
No, there's no, it's unallocated, it's a term of, for the budget purposes. It's money built into the budget, or two FTE, or positions built into the budget, but they're not, they are unallocated in that we don't yet know what they are. There's no position or person or job description.
So they're not floaters?
No, there's, no. No, no, no. It's space.
It's a placeholder, then?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm trying to coordinate the language on that.
Yes, exactly.
And we don't, okay. I guess that answered.
Right. And so if you look, you have some detail on how salaries worked out in this year's budget. In fact, it's in the first piece of the explanation. You'd see that so far, at least in this year's budget, we've not used those three unallocated. So, you know, they were, those, you know, sometimes a two-tenths of an FTE turns into art, or music, or science, or an additional teacher, or a special ed teacher, you know, whatever, as the system works through, that's our flywheel, if you will, to be able to absorb those kinds of needs. This year, we didn't use, we didn't use them, and we didn't fill some other positions as well. About six FTE were not filled this year.
Steve?
Thank you. So going back to the computer-assisted instruction, looking in the notes for that non-certified line, it said it includes teaching assistants. What kind of teaching assistants are in the computer, or how many, I guess is the bigger question? Are that 19?
That'd be computer, yeah. I'd have to, I don't have that detail with me, but that is the computer lab TAs. I'm just not certain how many there are.
We assign TAs to the computer labs, especially at the elementary and Bay Trail, and they're in there when the students come in. So there are teacher assistants in those rooms.
So is it equivalent to, just ballpark, are we talking two or three FTEs, or 10 FTEs, or?
I want to say, I believe there's five TAs in the computer labs across the district.
Full-time? The equivalent of full-time?
Yes.
We can provide additional detail on that.
Well, I guess, let me go to a broader question and ask, have we ever, or would we consider doing an analysis of this part of our expenses to see if we are, how efficiently we're using our resources and our monies? Because as I look at the, the number of techs and the computer hardware capital line, it's significantly greater than what I'm used to. In my environment, we have about the same number of pieces of equipment, albeit a different distribution, and our budget numbers are quite a bit different.
It's interesting.
So I don't know if, you know, sometimes you just keep doing the same thing, and that's fine, but it's not a bad idea, every once in a while, step back and say, you know, clean piece of paper, is this the best way of going about things?
We have quite a.
Just something to throw out there.
Certainly. We have quite a bit of data on, in terms of those positions. So there's, at least with regard to the technology services, Mr. Trukowski has a work order system, you know, online, you can, you log in what you need. And he, so he's able to track and analyze, you know, what the needs, what the requests and so on are. I could ask him to provide a little bit more information on that, if it'd be useful.
I don't know that needs to come back to the board. I'm just suggesting that the next time you find yourself with free time, that it might be an interesting internal audit type of study that we ourselves conduct to say, you know, are we indeed making best use of this, these resources? The other question I had goes to the enrichment teachers. So do we have, we made a decision at one point to reduce our enrichment teachers by two, and now we're proposing, depending upon a study, I see that, possibly restoring that. Do we have some evidence that says that we're getting negative results as a result of having reduced this, or what's the impetus behind this consideration?
I'm going to turn to the instructional people for that answer.
Sure.
That's actually one of the expected outcomes of the study this spring. In the information that I've uncovered in my time in the district so far, it appears that there has not been a concerted effort to measure the impact. You know, that there, I think there's a solid philosophy behind, you know, stretching kids and enriching them, and we put programs in place that appeared to address their intellectual needs, but there's never really been a concerted effort to assess whether there was an impact or not. So that's one of the things we want to look at this spring before we make this determination.
Okay.
Steve, I believe there is a report, I think, Dr. Grimm, in April, on our schedule for, from the enrichment, you know, survey, right?
Yes, there is, yep. And some of the initial indications from the, from the students and families that are being serviced indicate that they're feeling the effects of it. You know, with how we've been able to quantify it and look at it in an organized, intentional way, that's the next couple of months.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, that, you know, let's quantify this and measure the impacts. It's a little disconcerting that we didn't look at it from that point of view to start with, to say, okay, you know, we see that we have, again, much as I was saying with the computer-assisted instruction, to, okay, this is what we're doing, this is what we're getting, is it the best balance? And approach it in a very systematic way, rather than say, gee, I think we could do with fewer.
Right.
I like data. I like systematic approaches to things, so I think it's good that we're trying to measure this.
We were hoping to have the study done before the budget process, but we just couldn't do it with transition. So we're thinking it's better to be more conservative and then be able to implement if needed.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? John?
Taking turns here. Go for it. I know it's an insignificant amount, but I think the uniform replacement thing is important, because I know when I was at the Boosters, they were talking about it, and they talked about how they do contribute a large amount of money, too, and they just got, I know, some piece of equipment. So I just think that's great that we can do that, and, you know, it's a response to something they talked about, and, you know, apparently Pete put it in his budget and passed it up. So I think, you know, even though their line looks like it's a little higher or whatever, that's important, so I think that's a great gesture to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mark, I have a question for you. First, regarding the substitute teacher salaries, I see here that it says, last time we increased it was 2007, 2008. You're not recommending any increase, thank you very much, but this, are we still looking good, you know, compared to other? are we still looking good, you know, compared to other, this school district, or is this going to be harder for our teachers to find substitutes?
I think at this point, in the way the market has been, that it's a teacher-rich environment, so there are substitutes available, we've not, we've had sporadic issues with substitutes, but it depends more on time of year, and when all districts are interested in having the same substitutes, it's not driven by cost or by price at this point. So, you know, we're not recommending an increase.
Okay. My other question is in regards to the co-curricular activities. The salaries, the stipends for clubs and everything, so, you know, usually when we, you know, we talk about clubs, we know that every school has their own allocated budget, so this is where this goes?
Correct.
Okay, and so the increase, okay, I understand it now. However, it also says that academic contests, entrance fees for math, science, Olympiad, Model U.N., masterminds, but to the best of my knowledge, at least the ones that I know of, students pay their own trips, and they pay their entry fees, and, you know...
For masterminds? I'd have to look into that, so I'm, that's not my area.
Would you please?
Sure.
Okay. I appreciate seeing here the competitive exam fees for foreign languages, I know that's been a topic of discussion, so it's great that we now do that, but I'm interested in knowing, you know, about the rest. If students pay, then what do we pay on our end?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
I do know that the, for the Olympiads and the Model U.N., when those are billed through BOSI's, and the district has to sign an agreement to say that we are joining, so then we send a fee with it. So I'm not sure how it's backfilled in terms of revenue, but I know the district has to make the payment itself. So we can find out, though, in terms of which pieces the students are funding.
Okay, that would be great, if we could do that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. That's it, thank you.
Okay, the, oops, let me just get caught back up. Just in terms of budget process, I want to shift a little bit from this particular piece of the budget to the budget as a whole. So this bar graph shows our budget progress to date, what we've been, the pieces of the budget that we've been working through, and as you can see, and this includes some changes that we've made to previously presented budgets that I'll talk about in just a minute. Those changes include some of the reductions, changes, and some of the additional uses of reserves that we discussed at the February board workshop. So ERP, I apologize, but that's essentially stimulus money, that's the early retiree reinsurance program. Essentially, it's funds given by the federal government to us for, in support, so one-time revenue, one-time shot of revenue in support of retiree health insurance benefits for particular retirees. We had discussed at that meeting, removing the buses from the general fund budget and purchasing them out of reserves. We talked about a balanced approach, that we couldn't balance this, that we would not be able to move forward with this budget with just one thing, that it would be inappropriate to just try and use reserves, or to just depend on the tax levy, and that some reductions would have to be part of that process. So we identified a need for approximately half million dollars' worth of reductions, and we said we would look at taking an additional $300,000 from the debt service fund in support of the budget. So there was already $100,000, so we'd take an additional three, for about $1.6 million. We've done that. Those changes, to the extent that we're able to, have been included in the budget. So the reserves, the debt service fund, the use of federal, that stimulus money's been built in. And this is what that budget looks like in terms of the overall level of spend. So we're at, you'll see here that buildings and grounds, that transportation and debt service bar, the red bar for the current, go forward here, is now lower than it has been, for the reasons we just talked about, the removal of the buses and the additional debt service funding. We're at about 2.6% budget to budget. And of course, the major change, the bar, those candy stripe bars, still in process, but you can see that it's really benefits in this budget driving it. The 2.6% is about $2.2 million, so about an $87 million budget, that's about a $2.2 million increase over last year, or 2.6%. But in terms of benefits, and one particular benefit, that 2.6% or $2.2 million, $1.6 million of that is new employee and teacher retirement system costs. So without that, budget to budget, all the other stuff in here is about $600,000. That's seven tenths of a percent, budget to budget. The CPI is currently at 2.1%. So, you know, certainly, we know that retirement system costs are greatly outstripping the rate of inflation. Our budget is growing, including salaries, including our, including the other benefit lines, including everything in here at .7%. So I think we're working to restrain our costs, but even with that, 2.6%, we certainly, we do have challenges on the revenue side of our budget as well. State aid from year to year is going down by approximately 6%. So that budget, right now as we sit tonight, 2.6%, 6% built in, is 5.4% on the levy, or about 5% on the tax rate. But we haven't yet finished this work. So we'd identified, if you'll remember, that that $1.6 million had four pieces, and we're still working on reductions, so half million dollars' worth of reductions. But as we've had those conversations, it's been, they've been, it's been a difficult year, and those have been difficult conversations, because this isn't the first time that we've talked about reductions over the course of the last few years. People have been following this at home, and folks on the board know that for the past five years at least, reductions have been pretty much a fixed part of our conversation. So we wanted to go back and look at, you know, we show, and I have later in this presentation, the levy increases over the last five years, the history of levy increases, and we know they've been low. And so we, I wanted to go back and over that same period of time, look at what we've done with regard to staffing. So we had a question from a board member as to, how's that been distributed? Has it been fair? You know, what does fair mean, I guess, is something we all need to wrestle with a little bit, but has it been somehow equitably distributed? Where's it impacted? What's it done? So I wanted to provide a little bit of information on that for some more context as to the conversations that we're having now about reductions. So about 5% in the total budget. The chart that we looked at, this is based on the chart that we looked at at the board workshop. So just split it up a little bit differently, and looked at it in a little different way. We went from 865 positions total in the district to 825. If you take out the support services portion of those, just to get to the instructional portion of the budget, that removes a couple of hundred positions, so now you're at 690 positions approximately, to 632, about an 8% reduction in staffing. How's that distributed? District office was, is down, you know, you can see the numbers, down 9% at the district office. This is instructional, non-instructional, this is everybody. So it is FTE, so it's certified staff, non-certified staff, some paid more highly than others, but it's people. District office down 9% principals and assistant principals, we've reduced over that period of time, 4%, 9% reduction in special education. We've had lots of conversation about the mental health area of the budget, you see it down 17%, and that's in terms, the total of school counselors, psychologists, social workers. Regular education teachers, again, largest portion of the budget, down 7%, and that works out to the 8% total. Now, again, that, to go back, to focus in on that teaching, regular au-ed and librarians, 411 positions, 381, that's down 7%. Lots of stuff, lots of people in that 7%, so this is where those, this is where those reductions occurred. Elementary, again, K6 is down only 2%, but that includes the addition of the full-day kindergarten program. So we added full-day kindergarten teachers for the 12, 13 budget, they're in there, and we're still down 2%. District-wide programs, so for example, art, I included in district-wide, because certainly there's secondary art teachers, there's art teachers at the middle school, there are teachers middle, at the middle school. I lumped all those programs that had a K-12 breadth together, and you can see those reductions. Virtually every line touched, and about varying from approximately around 11, 10, 11% enrichment, went from nine positions to seven. You know, that's a fairly dramatic increase in unallocated, et cetera, but it's only five positions overall, so the percentage change is greater. And then at the secondary level, in the core areas, about equal distribution of reductions across time. Science and social studies actually grew slightly in that period of time, and English has remained unchanged, but there's been reductions in math, health, foreign language, science, and so on. So I hope that helps. I think it's fair to say that, you know, in terms of spreading the pain, that the pain's been well-spread. There's not, you know, in part, because, don't forget, this has been driven, we have tried to do this on the basis of enrollment, and as enrollment goes down, it doesn't typically go down just in art, or just in music, or just in elementary, it goes down across the district, and the cuts have come through time, perhaps not in one single year, but through time, across the district staffing as well.
Excuse me, Mark?
Yes?
You mentioned enrollment, and I was going to ask about that. What has been our decrease in enrollment over that same period?
You know, I would have to, I would have, I want, I can't do that off the top of my head, I should have put that on the slide, and actually, I started to, and then I think I just got distracted, but I'll provide that. It has decreased.
Right.
I don't think it's decreased by 8% in that period of time, which would, you know, then track against these, I think it's decreased less than that. I'm fairly certain of that.
It would still help give us some perspective, though.
Sure.
Of how much of this is justified by enrollment.
Okay, Catherine?
Do you know if this has any effect on class size? I'm looking specifically at math, so if it's relative to enrollment, then I suppose it's a wash, but do you happen to know?
I don't know. I don't, I didn't try and do that level of detail.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Just off the top of my head, I mean, I'm remembering the number 90. Like, is that the difference from last year to this year, that we're down 90 students? And then, I think it's been plus or minus something like, you know, I know it's gone up to that, but between 2007, 2008, I know that that was, I think, one of our top, 2007, 2008, we were like pretty high.
In terms of enrollment?
Yes.
No, we've been trending downwards in enrollment longer than that, so, quite a bit longer than that. The peak in enrollment came, by my memory, and I'm doing this from memory as you are, so quite a bit previous to that. Some of this, these changes, of course, were probably catch-up from that, you know, as we caught up from those years of declining enrollment as well, but I don't have that here to pull apart for you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
So those additional changes, we're working on that half million dollars. Right now, we have identified some retirement savings, they're not included yet, at about $129,000, and we're at about $200,000 in staffing reductions. About four FTE so far identified, as we're working our way through that, through those conversations. Again, Dr. Grimm mentioned the process that's being gone through, lots and lots and lots of conversation, and it's been slow, but I think it's been pretty thorough. So more to come on that, but that's an additional piece of the budget left, the additional piece of the budget that needs to be left wrestled to the ground. It's hard, I think, because it's being done in the context of those previous reductions. It's, you know, in terms of reductions, the ones that we've made in the past constrain our future. So, you know, once we make a reduction, those reduction, you know, the pool gets smaller, and program becomes more and more impacted. And we, you know, we're doing this in the context of a directive, I think, that program not be negatively impacted. If we can cut program, then it's relatively, a lot easier to cut staff. But without, but it's much more artful to be able to make the reductions without negatively impacting program. Based on that history that you just saw, we've been making those changes, and every year, it gets a little harder. So we're working our way through that as well. That same context is true in the rest of the budget as well. So for the past five years, we have maintained a history of relatively low increases in the tax levy. We've been responsible in terms of the economic times. Our goal says that we have to recognize the fiscal environment that we're working in, and I think this slide's evidence of that history, that we've done a fairly good job of restraining the growth in our budget and in our levy over the course of those five years. So we're at 1.2% on a five-year average for increases in the levy. But again, that has, it's a different part of the budget, it's a different side of the budget, but the impact's the same. It's an impact of flexibility. As we, as our past influences our future, we've cut, as we've cut closer and closer to the line on program, we've worked our way closer and closer to the line on the revenue side. Certainly, that slide's evidence of that. This is a, this is a little gra, this is a graph of a 10-year history of the tax rate on true. So the true value, we have different, essentially what this does, it's a term of art, but the, it takes our entire levy and divides it by the total real valuation of property in the entire school district. So it does away with changes between towns, and different assessment levels, and different rates. It's not the rate on assessed, it's a single number that districts use, that is used by the state in comparisons from district to district. It's a single, one-stop shopping number for the level of taxation in the community for schools. And you can see, over the course of that 10 years, the trend's been generally down. So it's gone up, but it's also more generally gone down. And what that means is that over the course of that period of time, the rate of real value of property in the community has grown faster than our levy. So we, essentially, our tax rate, our real tax rate, is lower than it was in those previous years. And this slide's also evidence of that. Those of you with some more history, this is the tax rate on true compared to our peers across the county, and we're in the middle of the pack. There was a time when we led the league in this. That's no longer true. We are just about in the middle, certainly not the lowest, but certainly not the highest as well. And we've gotten there over the course of time through a number of ways. There have been cuts, we just talked about that, they're real, they continue to have an impact, there's no doubt about that. We've had modest levy increases, but they were increases. But the other thing we've done is increased our use of fund balance and reserves. So in the 13, 14 budget, after the changes we made, this is a list of what is included in that budget that's either a use of reserve or a one-time revenue. So we're not increasing our use of appropriated fund balance, but we've been maintaining that at about $2 million. Employees retirement reserve, again, we're not increasing it, but we've been using 417, we're maintaining that. We have, we have been, over the course of the last several years, been gradually unwinding an accrual for retiree health, that's included. The debt service fund at 400, that's not, that is, $300,000 of that is new this year. The ERP money, or the early retirement reinsurance money, the stimulus money, is new this year. And also included here, although it's built in on our revenue side, and has been for the past nine... here, although it's built in on our revenue side and has been for the past number of years, the Fair Plan repayment, the sales tax. I included this at the last minute. It's, it's part of our revenue stream, but it's rapidly becoming a one-time revenue. It was a five-year one-time revenue, but we're getting to the end of it. And I think this is about that. So for next year, as we build this, we're gonna, we know there's some challenges that we're gonna be facing. So the early retirement neck, we've, we've built it in for next year, next year's it. It'll be gone, won't return. The Fair Plan repayment also expires next year, so 13, 14, that revenue's built in the budget, about $350,000 of that will go away. And the following year, in the 14, 15, that'll be the last year, will exhaust that retiree health insurance accrual. So, you know, those are going to be challenges that we're gonna have to face as we move forward. And our history also impacts, impacts our future in other ways as well. So this slide I showed at the last board meeting, but I wanted to bring it back again, just to put a little bit of context as, as to what influence our choices have. So last year, our cap was, in terms of the tax levy, was 3.14%. Our ra, our cap, or, I'm sorry, our cap was 3.14. We appropriated 1.6%. Our increase on the levy was 1.6%. That was a, that was a, that essentially meant that $813,000 of levy was not taken. If we went to the cap this year, that 5.4%, we reclaim some of that because we're allowed to carry some of it over. And the loss over time that that then accumulates to is about $1.2 million. So over time, that decision last year, no matter what we do at this point, results in a loss over time of $1.2 million. It compounds, however, so that, because of the way the cap calculation works, some money in the calculation you can carry over and some you can't. For us, the breakpoint in this year in the 5% is about at the 4% level. So if, if our levy were at 4%, nothing else would be allowed to be carried over. 5%, that 1.4% difference between the ultimate cap and, and the 4% lost to the levy calculation forever. And over the course of time, over the course of the next four years, that's $4.2 million. And there is no way that then that can be rewound and reclaimed, no matter what our history, our other history is, than with reserves, with expenses, with, with any of the other moving parts of the budget. That's just not reclaimable. So that's an important new concept and an important new context for us as we build budgets now in this tax cap environment. It used to be, it was really a one-year decision. You know, what do we need for this year? How does that work? Are we okay? Now our decisions have consequences in each of the future years. And as you know, I've been showing this, even with the levy at 4, 5, 4, we are, as those uses of, of reserves expire, this, this assumes that those reserves that expire are replaced by other reserves being spent down. But it also assumes that the teachers and employees' retirement system rates increase at 2% a year and that health insurance increases at 10. And those increases, even at the cap, will drive us into deficit over the near term. We're good for a couple of years, but those are very significant challenges that the district faces. And when we look at this, we need to think about that, in, this in context with all, with those other choices and with the idea, the question of how much of those revenues, how much of cap revenues can we afford to forego in the near term? So that's a little bit of, of context, I think, for where we're at. Lots left to be done. Whereas, as Dr. Grimm indicated, we're still working on, on reductions and we expect we will have some to bring to you. BOSI's is still in process, we're finalizing that right now. The state aid budget is supposed to be a little early this year. Because of the holidays, they, for them to be on time, they will be leaving Albany, they're scheduled to leave Albany in March, March 24th, I believe. So, and they have to have it done by then or they have to stay over and they don't want to do that. The governor's pushing very hard for non-time state budget, so we may know a little more. And if you recall our previous conversation, there's a hundred and some, 120, some odd million dollars of money in that budget that wasn't really allocated that I think will be. So that may have an impact on our numbers and it might, and it should be timely for us in a decision-making. I hope that it's timely for us in a decision-making process. We're continuing to work, we have a meeting scheduled next Monday with principals. We'll continue to work on staffing program. I've begun to gather assessment data from the, from the town assessors, so we'll, we'll hone in on information that'll be necessary for us to estimate a tax rate. But right now, I think it looks, it is fairly certain, I think, that nothing, you know, there will not be dramatic changes there and that our increases will be about a half, our rate should be about a half percent less than our levy based on that growth. School budget advisory team on March, on, on March 12th. On March 14th, we'll be having another conversation on education here in this room, another chance for the community to hear and learn and for us to talk about what we're, what is included or not included in the budget. And we have a series of board meetings as we work our way out towards the end of this. The ultimate, final opportunity for people to learn about the budgets on May 7th. And then, that's, while it's a hearing, the budget's already adopted by the board at that point. This is really the last opportunity for the community to become informed about it in sort of a formal fashion. We've got lots and lots of scheduled presentations at various groups, but that's the last group formal meeting and then, of course, the, the vote on May 21st. Are there any questions? I was talking fast, but I was also yelled at for having a lot of slides, so I thought I'd better move it along as best I could.
Thank you, Mark. Board members, any questions? Steve?
Thank you, Karen. Mark, just two questions. Where do we stand on our conversion of the bus reserve to our operating budget? We started that process a few years ago?
Once we've, we had, we established the reserve, we funded it, but in this year's budget, you'll recall that all got conflated. There was a number of, of changes around debt service and prepayment and, but all of that's unwound at this point. And with this budget, there is zero, this, this budget, the 13, 14 budget begins, what you've seen here is the buses moved entirely into the reserve and $0 are budgeted in the general fund. So it's moved the entire bus purchase into reserve. Next year, for 14, 15, if we stick to plan, we'll need to build about $80,000 into the general fund, the rest out of the reserve, then 160 and so on and so on, as we gradually build the general fund share back up as the reserve exhausts itself. And the idea was that that would be a 10-year process, that over time, by the time that reserve's exhausted, we would have, you know, built the, the bus purchase back into the, into the general fund.
Okay. The other question deals with the funding for the ERS and TRS. That's, my recollection is that's based on, it's a rolling average of the past five years, whatever it is, and it's tied tightly to the, the market performance that, where the state invests the monies.
Yes.
So last year, we had a good year in the market. It was about a 10% increase in the, in the Dow Jones at least.
And it's a phenomenal year today.
Yeah, yes. And even year-to-date, I mean, it's looking pretty good. We can't forecast what it'll be in December, but if, if it continues to do reasonably well, say 10% again, can we start to see some relief, do you think, in the, our retirement?
I would hope so. I really would hope so. You know, that is the theory, that if the, I don't know, I certainly don't know what their mix of investments is and, and how that works. You know, it's certainly, they don't track the Dow exactly. They own an awful lot of things. So, but as the market does better, certainly the return on the investments in that system does better. They, they had a big hole they were digging their way out of, but if the market continues to perform the way it is, it's very reasonable to expect that that moderates. You know, I don't know. I, I was thinking about that as I drove here because the, on my car radio, they're talking about today's, you know, a record Dow. And I just, you know, I wonder how that works over the course of time. So if I could predict that, I wouldn't be here.
If we have, you know, two years, good years in a row, and it's a five-year rolling average, well, that's halfway, almost, you know, through that period. So you would expect it to at least, at the very least, bottom out.
Right.
And not be getting worse.
The, yeah, true, although, you know, for the, for the, one of the, one of the hidden pieces of that is there, the markets, or the, I'm sorry, the teachers' retirement system assumed internal rate of return is 8%. They assume that for them to be fully funded, that their investments turn, overturn 8% a year, year after year after year, which, you know, a lot of other retirement systems across the country have recognized as being a little too aggressive.
Right, yes.
So, you know, they need to get to 8% a year just to break even and they, and they, that, and so at 8%, they haven't begun to fill their hole. So I think that five-year average, they're gonna need several years of really good performance before they get back on an even keel.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mark.
Oh, I get to keep talking, I'm sorry. The other piece that I wanted to touch on tonight has to do with, I want to bring the board up to date on where we're at with some of our outstanding capital projects, but most importantly, at the next board meeting, we'll be adopting, we'll be talking about three prop, three propositions. A proposition, the proposition for the general fund budget, in order for us to meet our advertising deadlines, we have to adopt that more than 45 days in advance so we can advertise and so on. So at the next board meeting, that proposition will be on, will be on the agenda. Also on the agenda will be a separate, we need a separate proposition for the approval of buses, because they're being purchased out of the reserve. That now has to be a separate proposition. And we will be offering a proposition for a capital project. And I wanted to talk a little bit about that. This has had quite a bit of history. As, as you know, we've been working, we've been looking at the building condition survey and we've been working with a roof project at, at Scribner and also looking at the Bay Trail BCS. And at this point, what we would propose is roof repair and replacement. We've had lots of conversation at previous meetings about this, about 30,000 square feet of roofing at the Scribner, on Scribner, that's at the end of life and needs to be replaced. And we've also looked at including some repairs and renovations at the locker rooms and the Bay Trail gym. So over the course of time, we've had a number of complaints and we have concerns, some safety concerns in that area as well. So essentially, this isn't a complete redo by any stretch of the imagination, but if, if you approve, this piece of the project would replace the lighting, the folding partition in that, in that gym is in need of a lot of repair and the backboards are in pretty tough shape. So it would replace those, refinish the gym floor, add a small bank, a three-row bank of bleachers, put in a small storage space to eliminate the verdi box that's behind the building right now. And most importantly, I think, reconfigure the locker room. In terms of locker room renovations, this is really shower, the shower area is in pretty bad repair, actually. It's not used. So it would reconfigure that. And one of the goals of that, besides making it usable space, it's used for storage now. And besides making that usable space, it would reconfigure the, reconfigure that shower space to allow hallway access and a separate public restroom. So right now, the only, the restroom facility there is in the gym space for public that comes to see, you know, activities in that gym. And we think that a usefully, we could usefully add a, a public restroom. The HVAC, things like that, the heating, ventilating, air conditioning, the movement of air, heat, and all those things were, were tackled in the capital project we just finished. But what was left out of that was the repairs and sort of fit and finish of that space. So we'd propose addressing that as the same ti, at the same time we do the roof in that building.
Okay. What's a verdi box?
Oh, it's the big steel storage, I apologize, it's the big steel storage boxes. They look like a truck trailer without wheels. They're stuck, there's a couple stuck behind the district office right now. There's a couple behind Bay Trail, a couple behind the high school. They tend to pop up when storage runs out and we can't think of another way to do it.
All right, thank you.
They're not a preferred alternative for lots of reasons.
Right. Any questions? Catherine?
If you eliminate the verdi bags and then eliminate the storage from the shower area.
Yeah, the sho, the shower area storage, can't think of what's on the girl's side. On the boy's side, it's classroom chairs. So, you know, it's just, it's at this point an unusable catch-all space.
I see.
So, yeah.
Okay, all right. So you're gonna find a space then for those chairs, right?
We'll have to, right.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
Okay, the, um...
Mark, can I ask you, why do we have showers in Bay Trail?
Well, once upon a time, kids showered.
But I know, in school, I mean, at the high school, I understand with the pool and everything, but in Bay Trail, this is, I guess...
Well, this would, this would, there, that unused space was gang showers. It brings it back to a couple of shower stalls and mostly a changing area. In fact, what's happening right now, I'm told, and we need to figure out how we're gonna work that out, but middle school children being what they are, they won't change in the locker room. Essentially, what happens is a line forms for them to change in the two toilet stalls. So they, you know, run in there, they change a line forms. And the gym teachers have requested if we could do something about that so that they could reclaim some gym time and make that operate a little more efficiently, that everyone would benefit. So there is little showering that goes on. There's a couple of, of individual showers. The gang showers have been, you know, are already eliminated. So we'll reclaim that space, reconfigure it, install the public restroom. We'll still have a couple of showers for, spaces, individual shower stalls for the occasional showering that needs to happen, but the showering at those buildings isn't a great need.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, other updates, just quickly. I've, we've talked a lot about a security, security projects and a security, and, and some conversation about that. We, we developed and issued a request for proposal for that, for security input, for, we want to know where we're at with regard to a lot of things in terms of the security of our buildings. So our RFP asked for, for a proposal that would look at these five things. So a site assessment of all the buildings. I expect that to be construction kind of things. You need better doors here, or that, you know, locks or swipe cards or those sorts of things. But that's only one of the components. We wanted someone with knowledge in this area to review our documents, our practices. How do you do this? What do you need to have a child release to you? What does that process look like? Review our emergency management exercises. Are we doing a good job? What could we do better? How could we do that better? Identify any vulnerabilities around the community or in our districts that, that might exist and what resources we have to, to address those and to give us a written report. So it's been interesting because we got, we, you know, that's a broad net and we got different proposals. We have in hand now that all the proposals, we're in the process of doing an analysis. We're gonna form a, a small committee with building representation to review them and make a recommendation. You'll be seeing at a future board meeting, hopefully even the next board meeting, a recommendation from us around that process. But it's interesting because we got two very different kinds of proposals. We got architects who wanna, who focus more on the site assessment, site assessment piece of safety, and we got firms that really specialize in security. They're more, you know, they're former FBI agent kind of types that have... They're more, you know, they're former FBI agent kind of types that have not so much the architecture experience, but the security experience. And they write a very different proposal. So, we have them all. We'll make an analysis and a recommendation. I think we're going to learn a lot just from going through the process. The one thing we did know, did learn though, as we've done walkarounds with the police forces and Mr. Nelson at Harris Hill had a particular interest, so we had the SWAT commander come through and look at that building. There is a need for us to install some doors at the hex entrances in that building to be able to at least isolate hex from hex from hex. That can be done without, with, and Mr. Nelson agrees, it can be done without damaging the character of that building. It's not major construction, and it's in process right now. We are on track, we hope, to have that done over April break. So, that's the installation of a couple of doors. We're just going to do it. So, and that's in process right now. The transformer project is on hold. Well, that's not true. It's moving forward in its own way. So, right now, it's at SED for approval. It is project number 441, and they're working diligently on project number 225. We, it's March. We don't expect to have any approval by, until the end of March, if not into April. And if you'll recall, this includes the, this is the entryway at Scribner, the revised entryway for increased security, and also the replacement of the transformer. Transformer lead times are very long. Switchgear lead times are very long, and there's some precast concrete at the entryway. Lead times on that is a long time. And, you know, to do the transformer work requires that we shut the building off in terms of electricity. Nobody wants to be in September wondering how, when the transformer's going to get here. So, we've, at this point, made the decision that it's, the timing will not work in any comfortable way. So, we're going to delay the work. We had aimed for this upcoming summer. At this point, we don't believe we'll make that. We're pushing it out to the following summer. It's been approved. It's in process. But what that allows us to do is to bid the project on our own schedule, to issue an award, to have the successful contractor order the equipment, and to have it on-site before we shut the building off. That way, we can avoid, you know, getting right up to the start of school and not having any electricity so, or not having that entrance done. So, spring 2014. And the other significant conversation going on, at least being begun, has to do with field lighting at the high school. This has been in the wind for quite a while. And so, after lots of conversation, as Dr. Grimm did his entry conversations, I think many of the conversations ended up having at least something to do with field lighting. We're not proposing a project at this point by any stretch of the imagination, but what we are suggesting that we should begin is to gather some information so that we can make a sort of a reasoned determination and have a public conversation about that issue. So, we know that there's things we're going to need to have that conversation. So, we'd need an analysis of the costs and benefits of having those lights, costs and benefits to the district and to the surrounding community. We would need lighting studies, traffic studies, security studies perhaps of the area. We'd need a draft field use policy. So, if we were going to do this and have lights, when would we use them? Under what circumstances? How long would they be on? What would they be used for? What would the game schedule look like? Because we would, we feel like we would, we need those pieces of information in order to have a conversation with the public about it. So, we will gather this, the idea is that over the course of this next summer, we begin to gather that information, that we, we look at draft field policies from surrounding districts. We begin to craft our own. We do some work. Not clear to me yet what exact, how far we would have to go down the road, but we at least go down the road of doing the data gathering, the studies, far enough to be able to substantively have a public informational meeting, to gather information, to talk about this, and do that in September of next year, to communicate, this is what we know, this is what we've learned. You know, I expect that there will be people who think this is the finest idea ever and folks who are opposed. So, we, you know, we need to begin, if we're going to undertake this, to develop a process that'll, that'll move that conversation along. So, but I think for us to do that, we certainly need the board's guidance and suggestion that that's even something you want to undertake.
Mark, any questions at this point?
Yes, I just ask, is there an overwhelming demand for this lighting?
Yep.
And not, not from the booster, not from the sports booster club. I'm sure they're in favor of it, and I don't want to discount that, but looking at the broad public that we serve, can we justify spending money at this time when we're talking about cutting staff to investigate something that we may or may not do a year or more from now?
I guess this is where the data collection would come, you know, where we would see if this is something that we want to do.
But these studies cost money. They're not free. Even if it's something as simple as the time of personnel in the district office, but I'm sure there's outside people we have to work with for the lighting study and so forth.
Yeah, I don't have costs on that. I mean, this is, you know, we didn't, we haven't proceeded because we wanted this conversation. So.
That's, that's my only concern, that, you know, do we want to shell out $30,000, $40,000, which it could easily be with consulting studies for this, when that's nearly what we spend on a teacher? And, you know, is this, is there that much demand for this at this time when we're watching our dollars?
Barb?
I understand, and, and I hear what you're saying about the cost of doing this study, but I think hearing over the years from multiple, multiple people, as well as interest groups that would be interested in renting these facilities if they had lights, I think we need to have the answer so that, once we have the information, I think then we can finally settle, do we do lights or don't we do lights? It's not just the sports boosters that are asking for it. There have been at least three other outside events that I know could have been here or looked to be here, but there were no lights. And it wasn't just sports stuff. I know it was a music band thing, marching bands doing their competition, that was it. I know that was one of them. So, I personally, knowing that this is always out there, this is always, maybe it doesn't rank in the top two things, but I would like to see that we do go forward with this study and so that we have an answer so that now we can say to people, this is what we're going to do and why. That's just mine.
Thank you, Barb. Any other comments?
I would just comment that I, I have heard that a lot, and it was more than just the boosters. It's enough to move forward and begin the study and collect information. We will be very mindful of the costs, though, of the studies. We think we can do a lot of it ourselves, but when it's, when we can't, we'll make sure that you know about it in advance.
As I say, after listening to Barbara, I was going to suggest perhaps a staged approach to this and start by canvassing the other districts who have put in lighting and see, you know, ballpark numbers. What did it cost them? What kind of revenues did it generate, you know, in terms of renting out the fields and so on, to see where we stand on that. And that may inform us as to whether we want to go further or not, and that's, that's a very low cost.
Sure. And I think, I haven't, I've seen, although it's been some time since I've looked at it, I know Fairport, when they did their lights, did a pretty substantive, a pretty substantial look at all of the moving parts. I think we could easily take a look at that. And I have to believe, although I don't know this, that Pittsburgh probably went through the very same process because they're in the process right now of, they just had theirs approved. And I would have to believe that they did a, you know, they would have had the same questions we do, very much the same questions we do.
I personally have been to boosters' meetings where there were people saying that they knew private investors who are interested in helping fund this. So, I appreciate what you're saying about us, you know, being mindful of the cost, but if there's, if there are people out there who are willing to invest in this, then I think we really need to investigate it.
Sure. And I wasn't saying I was opposed to it. I was saying, is there a demand for it? That's all.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I am done. Oh, there's one more slide, really? Oh, district redesign, I'm not. I apologize. This is a very quick update. I just wanted to let the board know that we're, that this has been, this process has been on a bit of a hiatus as we've been in transition with, you know, new district office staff, new superintendent and so forth. But we're in the process right now of, of continuing that conversation. So, later this week, Dr. Grimm and I have an appointment scheduled with Mr. Saversky, Dr. Saversky to look at extending his study. One of the questions the last committee left us with, the last committee meeting left us with, was some direction that they wanted to see more detail in terms of the options that he offered, in terms of what potential cost savings might be. So, we know that, we've looked at some of the work that he's done for other districts that have sort of gone a little bit further than we have in terms of that analysis. I mean, it looks pretty doable, to be honest with you. So, I think we want to have that, we will be having that conversation with him during this week about extending that study. And then what that leaves is room for an RFP, for a consultant to do some broader work around redesign, and we'll be looking at that process in the next, probably upcoming several months as well. So, just wanted to put this back in the, in the conversation a little bit, not really a substantive update tonight, but just really just to get it back into everybody's mind because I think it had fallen off the plate a little bit. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. One more.
The census update.
You're still on.
Yeah. There's always just one more. And there's one more after that. I apologize. I just lost track.
Sure. John?
I just had a question, you know, going back to the district redesign. I think the same parameters that Steve mentioned on the lights should apply for that because there should be some return on investment that we're looking for as we do this before we engage in costs. And I know we, we all thought, certainly like the, possibly a bus realignment because we've gotten input from a committee on that, but I want to be careful that we, again, look at the same approach because we could spend a lot of money and not come up with anything in regard to this. So, even though they're two distinctly different things, I think the same theory has to apply to this as well as, as the lights. We need to make sure we know what we're spending on before we jump forward with this and that we have, you know, consensus on it because it's even a wider gamut.
I agree. You know, and there, there has to be some potential for substantive return and, and, you know, but I do think, you know, that, that slide and, and our inclusion of that is there because, to be honest, at least in my mind, is whenever I work through some of that budget forecasting and futuring, I begin to, you know, my anxiety goes up around district redesign and, and we need to, and, because that conversation, you know, how we do our work and how we deliver our program and the program that our public expects while doing it for less money is, you know, really has to be what we're all about over the course of the next, over the next few years. And to a great extent, some of that, that district redesign work, the conversations, I think, are uncomfortable. In some cases, our public and our committee, honestly, is like, eh, we don't even want to talk about that. But they, but I think it's that poking around that's necessary and for us to be able to demonstrate to our public that we're doing due diligence and also to the extent that there really are more efficient and ways for us to be able to do our business, I think we need to find those. Census update, just briefly, very briefly, some of you received a census card in the mail. We're obligated by law to do a district census. It also helps us a lot in terms of forecasting, but it's always been a by-mail, a by-mail initiative. So, this year, for the first time in a green initiative, we're doing it all electronically. So, we did mail a postcard, but all of the, to, to let people know, but all of the responding and following up in future years are going to be done electronically. So, it was, it was a bit of work to put together, but everyone pulled it together, and, and I think it's, I think it's well done. We're all, we are already getting returns from that initiative. And I think I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This concludes our superintendent's reports. Board members, we are on page three of the agenda for board business. Facilities, you have a series of change orders that are included in your agenda. May I have a motion, please, that the above change orders that have been reviewed by and are supported by architects Scott Dool, project manager Gary Huffman, clerk of the works Jim Cordero, and assistant superintendent for business Marks and Susie be approved as described? Questions, comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. There's another change order, which is just for district office, and may I have a motion, please, that this change order that has been reviewed by and is supported by architect Victor Maselli, project manager Gary Huffman, clerk of the works Jim Cordero, and assistant superintendent for business Marks and Susie be approved as submitted? So moved. Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Financial items. Renewal of contract with Delphi Drug and Alcohol Council. The district contracts with Delphi for the provision of two substance abuse counselors with one counselor located at the high school and one split between the four elementary schools is up for renewal and is recommended for renewal. May I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to finalize contract terms and enter into a contract for services with Delphi Drug and Alcohol Council for substance abuse counseling and education services for the 2013-2014 school year at a cost of $61,000? So moved. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Adoption of the tax levy limit. Chapter 97 of the laws of 2011 enacted by the state legislator and the governor established the property tax cap on the amount that a school district's property tax levy can increase each year. This law requires that school districts submit to the state comptroller, the commissioner of education, and the commissioner of taxation and finance any information necessary for calculating their tax levy limit for the coming school year no later than March 1st. The comptroller has developed web tool that will allow districts to satisfy this reporting requirement via a single online submission. Further, the comptroller has announced that while districts must submit by March 1st, amendments and adjustments will be accepted through April 21st. Based on the information and guidance available, at this time, the 2013-2014 levy limit for Penfield has been calculated as set forth below. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District hereby approves the submission of the tax levy limit of $56,993,557 as calculated in accordance with guidance set forth by the state comptroller, the commissioner of education, and the commissioner of taxation and finance. This tax levy limit represents an increase of 4% and be it for the resolve that the tax levy limit plus all exclusions as set forth in the law is hereby established at This maximum levy increase after exclusion represents an allowable increase of 5.39%. May I have a motion, please, that this be approved? So moved. Second. Questions or comments? Steve?
You may plan on saying this anyway, Carol, but for the audience to be clear, this is, we are not setting the tax rate. This is what the governor's 2% tax cap allows us to raise our levy by if we decide we need to go that high. This is not the tax rate.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, all those in favor? Six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. We have no policies. We have no policies on our agenda, however, we are meeting tomorrow. Donations. Mr. and Mrs. Daniel Teeter have donated a Dynavox communication system valued at approximately $6,000 to the Penfield Central School District. A Dynavox is a high-tech communication instrument that helps individuals living with speech, language and learning disabilities communicate. This is very generous and welcome the gift. May I have a motion, please, that this gift be accepted by the Board of Education and can we please express our appreciation to the Teeter family on behalf of the students, speech, language teachers and the district? So moved. Second. Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. CSE Committee Subcommittee on Special Education Appointment. May I have a motion, please, that Mr. Scott Herschler, Scribner principal, be appointed to the District Committee on Special Education, District Preschool Committee on Special Education and Subcommittee for Special Education, Scribner Elementary School in accordance with Commissioner's Regulation Part 203 for the 2012-2013 school year. So moved. Second. Any questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. President's remark, remarks, I just have a few reminders. For the community, petitions for anybody interested in running for any of the board seats that are open this year are now available from our district clerk. And the deadline to submit your petitions is April 22nd. And Meet the Candidate Night is this year hosted by Penfield High School PTSA and they have scheduled this for May 1st. It will be again moderated by Jordy Seago. I also would like to remind board members and the community that there's a conversation on education that is scheduled for March 14th. If people would like to attend, voice their opinion about the budget and, you know, where we are and also listen to more feedback from us regarding the budget, it would be great. And that's it. Any unfinished business? Karen?
Mention real quick about the six-month evaluation that's gone out, is stipulated by the superintendent's contract. It's gone out to the parties that needs to go out and board members, if you will check the email, you should have a link to the survey and also Dr. Grimm has sent the supporting paperwork this evening for that as well. So you will get it back to me by Monday and we'll continue the processes. We amended the timeline for that six-month review.
Thank you. Any questions for Karen about that? All right. Thank you. We have no new business at this time. So may I have a motion, please, that the meeting be adjourned at 9:04 PM? So moved. Second. Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Six in favor, none opposed. Thank you.